Call this regular council meeting of October 28, 2014 to order. We have a moment of silence, silent reflection prayer offered by Council on Relief.
Please bow your heads. Gracious heavenly Father, we feel blessed with the fall colors that have been on glorious display. We thank you for that. We ask for the wisdom to make the right choices for our community and our families, and the strength to act in confidence, and have the will to do your will. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Third call to roll.
Brokaw?
Here.
Dries?
Here.
Halter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Walther?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to amend the agenda to include an executive session after we do the calendar, and when we come out of that executive session, I think we will take some action.
Do we need a motion on that?
I've moved.
My second. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Okay. We have an executive session after the adjournment.
Purpose?
Did you identify the purpose?
I can.
You will again when you want to go in.
It will be to consider the sale and purchase of real estate, and it will also consider compensation of municipal employees.
And that'll be after the calendar, not after adjournment.
Correct. Did I say after in German?
No, I did.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I tried to confuse people. Okay. Have approval of minutes, the minutes of September 23 regular council meeting, the October 14 council public hearing, and meeting work session, and the October 21 council public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I request approval of the minutes as presented for the aforementioned meetings.
Second. Any comments, questions? Minutes stand approved. Okay, we have some presentations to make at this time, and we have Halloween coloring contest winners. Chief, will you do the honors here?
Yes, sir. Would you care to come into well, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Mrs. Martin, would you ask your students to come to Iona, please? I'm very pleased to introduce the principal of our primary north middle school, Mrs. Martin, and she has brought along with her three winners from grades kindergarten, first and second grade at our elementary school. And these are the winners, and I think they have, I don't know if all of you have them, but you certainly do. Can you show our mayor and council your work here? These are what these ladies and gentlemen have been able to color, and Mrs. Martin and her staff selected our winners based on creativity and talent.
Who, I don't see it. Maybe towards, maybe that camera right behind you, if he's got it on? I'm not sure. Jason, are you awake?
Now, Mrs. Martin and Mayor Moore, if you would handle these presentations for me, the fire chief has agreed to join me, and we have the prizes to be brought out.
This is the Lauren, there you go. There you go. Okay. This is a second grader, this is a kindergarten, and then we have the Bobby Allen one, and this is our first grader. And they did a really good job.
I always say that no good job goes unrewarded. We have for each of you, where's our kindergarten? Okay, kindergarten, we've got the young lady's bicycle there, and first grader.
I was just going to.
Okay. And there you go. Thanks for participating, and we hope that we see you, and you'll have to come back and see us. Moms and dads that are here will make sure that they get a helper if you come back and see us, okay? All right. And there's also an elevator out there.
Yeah. I was gonna say. Turn the light down a step.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Come on, kids. Let me go. Let's go, man.
Is the elevator working for them?
It was turned on.
Oh, really? Well, Chief, you want to check the elevator? Maria said it wasn't working when she came out.
It wasn't open when I came in.
Officer Spinellick.
Okay. Are you checking? Okay, the next presentation we have is a proclamation by me for pancreatic cancer, and we have some people representing the group that were presenting this to. They have information on the back of the council chamber for any of you who want to grab some information on pancreatic cancer. Whereas in 2014, an estimated 46,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 39,590 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in single digits as just 6 percent. And whereas the symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late stage, and 73 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years of their diagnosis, while 95 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas approximately 1,730 deaths will occur in Ohio in 2014, and whereas the recurrent cancer Research Act was signed into law in 2013, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic, now I can't talk, cancer and other deadly cancers which help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. Whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is a national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in the Village of Green Hills and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to the developing effective treatments and a cure for pan- said it too many times, pancreatic cancer. Whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in the Village of Green Hills support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as those who have lost their lives to the disease, are committed nothing less than a cure. Whereas good health and well-being of the residents of the Village of Green Hills are enhanced as direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research and early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Now, therefore, I, David Moore, Mayor of the Village of Green Hills, hereby designate the month of November 2014 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. In the Village of Green Hills, I encourage all residents in the Village of Green Hills to be aware and familiarize themselves with the symptoms and treatments of pancreatic cancer. Okay. And in witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the Village of Green Hills to be affixed to this 28th day of October in the year of our Lord 2014. Cool. What cancer is that?
I want to thank the council and the mayor for doing this, because it's critical for their problems, disease. Thanks, Tim.
All right, moving on. council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are tape recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to two minutes.
My name is Thad, and I live on Damon Road, and my remarks are directed primarily to the community development and our zoning, particularly the result regarding the shopping center and the signs there. And what I'm bringing up is two problems I think we've got. We've got no sunset clause on some of these signs that are in the shopping center that are probably non-conforming, but the businesses have moved out long ago. The Gypsy Rose or Gypsy Moon Imports, they've been gone for four years, that sign's still there, and it's starting to look tacky. And I think under the new code, it probably doesn't even conform. I think you really should consider amending the zoning ordinance to put A as sunset clause, that if a business closes, there's a certain time after which the sign has to be removed, and make it a reasonable time, maybe six months or something, because perhaps a new business could come in and use the same sign, maybe change it. But when you have a situation where it's not being used for a long period of time, and perhaps it's not conforming under the new code, we should have a sunset clause where A, the sign should be removed, and lose its non-conforming use protection. Because if we're going to have a new zoning code, we went through a lot of heck to get one, one way or the other, and not everyone's happy with it, which means it probably was a fairly good code. It means that we have to tweak it every now and then, and I think this is one area where we really have to tweak it, because this is the center of our town. This is our village center. And I think it's just optics are everything. We do have a new business going in, our Troubadour, it has a really great sign there, but let's do something with the rest of them there. We may also want to consider amending the ordinance a little bit to permit a little bit more variation in signage, but that's another issue. But I think right now, we've got to consider with the junk that's sitting there, because it looks bad for everything. And there's something we can do about it. And it shouldn't be hard to, we've got a law director here that, geez, waiting for something to do, and I think between 12 o'clock and 6:00 in the morning, he's like, my God, now I can come up with a new sign ordinance, and how to restrict this. I mean, he's thinking about it right now, I can tell. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Thad. Any others?
Doug Kohler, 53, Iona. I'd like to take a moment just to thank everybody that helped out to make this year's Harvest Fest such a great success. It couldn't have happened without all of you. Yvonne, your help was invaluable, everything you took care of for us. Jeff, your leadership in the group helped a lot. I mean, it meant a lot taking care of the things that we didn't even realize you were doing. Service Department, they did a lot of work for me in the background that nobody even knows about, and I really appreciate them. There were many other helpers, Connie Shulley was there, Dan Dusa helped out a lot. It was a big success this year, and I am hoping that next year's even bigger and better. With all your help, I'm sure it will be. Take a moment to thank God for the weather, too. We had just the absolute best weekend we could have had. So, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Thad. Okay. Any others? All right. Reports of village officials, municipal manager Yvonne Kovak.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I want to start off to review the public records requests from the last quarter, as we cover July, August, and September, we had a few. On September 24, we received a request from Pat Anwin requesting all Village of Green Hills records since 2000 pertaining to Solberg or Associates, including but not limited to emails, letters, contracts, proposals, reports, check warrant copies. Item number two, all Village of Green Hills records since 2000 pertaining to Beth Solberg, again, the same items. Number three, all Village of Green Hills records since 2000 pertaining to the United States Department of Interior, again, including all emails, letters, written contracts, proposals, reports, check warrant copies. On September 25, I received a request from Diana Kohler requesting electronic copies of all citations and letters regarding violations of Green Belt during 2014, and the documents from individuals involved regarding Green Belt violations. And on October 21, we had a walk-in who requested copies of any code enforcement actions taken against 142 June Field. For my regular report, we have a number of things going on. First, I wanted to review, and follow up to the two public hearings that we had regarding the Community Development Block Grant, sorry, I've had a cold, so I'm really forcing myself to talk here, regarding the Community Development Block Grant program. We are going to be submitting one project application, very much like our previous one, for the Housing Improvement Repair Fund, that currently gives $2,000 for, up to $2,000 for eligible applicants to do certain repairs to their homes. We're going to expand those uses to include sidewalk repairs for homeowners, and also to include potentially up to $5,000 if a applicant is going to do some repairs that are consistent with historic guidelines, which essentially are a replacement of, almost identical replacement of existing items on their home. And again, it will be on an application-by-application basis, but other than that, we're asking for $25,000 per year, for a total of $75,000 for that program, in light of the fact that we're adding some additional uses for the money. I wanted to let you know that the Green Hills Tree Advisory Board has come up with a couple of exciting programs. You probably read about the Heritage Tree Program in the last journal, and we have received five nominations that I'll bring to council the next time with some photos for some trees to start that program. We're real excited about that. Also, wanted to thank Springfield Township for the donation of their flowers, and I think maybe you did that previously, I'll probably do it again, but it certainly did make the market look really pretty. Again, some folks are concerned about the expenditure funds, and in this case, our neighbors gave those to us, and they just look beautiful, so we certainly appreciate that. And also, at the same time, then the Alzheimer Center did their run in advance of the Harvest Fair, and I understand that was really great for them, and Doug, seriously, thanks to you for all the work that you did on that event. And I think it was just really mutually beneficial for both our company as well as the village. I want to remind citizens and council that the leaf collection is going on. You know, for the first two weeks of leaf collection, not very many leaves came down. All of a sudden, we've had a very heavy wind and some rain, so they're all falling at one time, and I guess I'd like to just ask to be patient. They are making their rounds as quickly as they can. It's heavier to pick up wet leaves, but they will get around to your pile. Try to not block them with cars. Don't put brush and things mingled in with the leaves, or they won't be able to collect those. But again, just rest assured that they will make their rounds. Right now, they're scheduled to go around to the entire village once a week, maybe quicker, if they can pick them up quicker, but I would say over the next two weeks, it's probably going to be the heaviest load, so they will probably be slowed down a little bit, but they will get around to your area. We have a number of legislative items on that we can begin to review at the time of the legislation, if that's, if council so wishes. We also have Matt Sanders with us tonight, our new finance director, who's here to walk us through some of the financial issues. Also want to mention that an issue has come up, well, we're always talking about our vehicles of late, and we've had two very unfortunate issues that are going to spur to acquisitions a little bit quicker. One is going to be the service truck, which I believe it is the time to start moving forward on that. The state bid is currently up for renewal, so as soon as that new state bid is out, we'll pursue ordering that truck. The second one is, we have had a second cruiser go down, which has a hefty repair bill of about $5,000, so we really don't want to spend the money on that. And so, at the appropriate time, I'm going to ask council for a motion to allow me to do a letter of interest to the vendor to let them know we were able to locate one that we could get ahold of fairly quickly. Is that right, Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
So, well, at a later point in time, we would have legislation, but what I would need from you right now is a motion to allow me to go ahead and at least give them the yes, we are interested in that vehicle kind of thing. So, that concludes my report for now. Thank you.
Law direct.
I have a question.
Answer. Question.
As long as we separate a brush from the leaves, are they still picking brush? Because we have huge branches falling out in the backyard for several of the neighbors and myself.
Yes, they are still.
So, as long as it's separated?
Collecting brush.
They're being collected, both of them are?
Correct.
Okay. And also, I give the application for the one in service that it was in Dayton on October the 23rd, directly having to do with taxes and the House Bill 5 for you and for our finance officer. Were either one of you able to go? I don't think he was able to go, but how?
No, neither of us were able to fit it into our schedule, but I, you know, I receive, and I'm sure Matt does, we receive updates on House Bill 5.
Updates, okay.
A lot.
Okay, all right.
Yes, but thank you, we appreciate that information.
Any other questions, the manager? Okay, hearing done, law director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item I can address, just to update council. I know it was requested that I give you an update on this, and this has to do with the Green Belt, the notice of violation, of a Green Belt district violation on Joywood property. This has to do with the installation of a concrete pad. Because the questions come up, where does that, where are things, you know, where does it stand on that? What I want you to understand is, a notice of violation was sent to the property owners. The property owners have retained legal counsel, and we've had an initial meeting with them, and they've expressed some interest in trying to resolve this through the variance process. There is a question right now, outstanding, as to whether the Board of Zoning Appeals has any jurisdiction to actually address the type of variance that they would need to request. And I mean, the short version is, they would have to get a use variance. And just so you know, well, the enforcement of this matter is on a stay right now, because they have submitted the formal letter to the village initiating at least the pre-application meeting requirements of our variance application. So, because they're trying to pursue the administrative remedy that they have, the enforcement is on hold while we work through that administrative process. What it boils down to is, they would need a use variance. We've previously stated that that's not something that the Board of Zoning Appeals can do. They have submitted a position letter to us, at least at this point, identifying what they, their position is that there's some ambiguity in our zoning code as it relates to use variances, and they have cited to us a number of cases in Ohio that stand for the proposition that if there is ambiguity in a zoning code, it should be resolved in favor of a property owner, since zoning laws, you know, take away basically a derogation of your property rights, so if there's a question, it should be resolved in their favor. We haven't resolved that question yet, but just so you know, and so council is aware, even if the resolution of that question would go in their favor, that doesn't mean they get to keep what they have. It means they would, all it means is, they would be allowed to actually apply for, and the BZA could hear their variance request. Doesn't mean they would get the variance, it just means that the Board of Zoning Appeals would even be allowed to hear it. That's the stage where we are right now. I mean, what would generally happen is, if the Board of Zoning Appeals is determined that they can hear the case, they'll hear it like any other variance. And if the variance is denied, well, if the variance is approved, then they'll be able to do whatever the variance allows them to do. If the variance is denied, then there are continued administrative appeals that they can, that they have at their opportunity to go to common pleas court.
Jeff, if the BZA does not have the authority to hear that, where does that, is there another route for the homeowner?
Well, I think one particular route that we've discussed with them is that if the Board of Zoning Appeals makes a decision that they don't have jurisdiction to hear it, that in itself may be an appealable question that they could appeal to the Court of Common Pleas.
Okay.
But beyond that, if the BZA does not have jurisdiction to hear a variance, that means no variance can be granted, that means they have to comply with what the code says.
Is that actually on their property, within their property?
Mm-hmm.
Where they have the pad at now?
Yes.
So, basically, it's that, it's that line between Green Belt and that? What is it called? I mean, it's like, there's Green Belt, and then there's?
It's privately owned property that is partially zoned as Green Belt, which I think is a flaw, but it is what it is. The fact that people can have property, and there's two different zone codes that are applicable to that piece of property is a...
Okay, well, I don't understand. If, so basically, what they have is their piece of property is going in the Green Belt, their outlined property is a part of Green Belt?
Yeah, it's zoned, it falls within the Green Belt zoning district.
All right, so then they have to stay away from that Green Belt, but it's still part of their property?
Yes, they own it. It's their property, but it's zoned, this is really just a zoning question. It's zoned Green Belt, the Green Belt has certain restrictions of what you can do. They constructed the concrete pad, we've given them a notice that that's in violation.
Right, yeah, I know the history of everything. I just didn't know the dynamics of where their property was at, and if it's inside Green Belt. If that's the case, then I would think the BZA would have the jurisdiction to vote on it.
Well, here, I would tell you, the jurisdiction question is this. Our code, and this is the point they've raised in their position letter to us, our code says, if you were going to have a use variance, here's the standard. Here's, our code spells out the standard that our BZA has to apply for use variances. In a later paragraph, it says, however, the BZA does not have the authority to grant a variance to allow a use that is not otherwise permitted in that district. Their position is, your first paragraph says you can have a use variance, your second paragraph says you cannot have a use variance. That seems to be ambiguous, it should be resolved in our favor, and all they're asking is, if it's resolved in our favor, we should be allowed to apply for a use variance.
Right, okay.
And that's the question that's, we're trying to resolve right now.
Cool. And generally, on the Green Belt zoning, it's usually a separate parcel in most cases, so they have two deeds. They have a deed for their property that's not zoned Green Belt, and they have a deed for the property that's Green Belt, generally speaking. Some of those had gotten combined.
Yes, and that's what I was going to say. What has happened in the past is that someone will own a parcel that's zoned residential, they'll buy the piece right next to them that's... that's zoned green belt, and then they'll consolidate their lots. So it erases that lot line, and they think, well, now I just have one big lot, and it must all be zoned residential. But combining lots, erasing a lot line, doesn't change the district boundaries on the zoning map.
Right.
So you might just have one lot now, but part of it is residential and part of it remains green belt.
It's like running into a right-of-way, you know, for Duke or somebody. You have the same type of thing in back of your house, right?
Right. Although I don't own it. Somebody else owns it.
Gotcha.
Another private individual.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
A question. If the BZA doesn't have the right to hear that, then they have the right to go to the common pleas court. If the BZA has the right to rule on that, and it's against the homeowner, have they forfeited the rights to go to common pleas court?
No.
They can still go to common pleas court to argue it?
If the Board of Zoning Appeals hears their variance request and then denies it, they have the ability to appeal that to common pleas.
Okay, so either way, they can go to the court?
Well, at least that way, we know they do. The, the initial question of whether the Board of Zoning Appeals even has jurisdiction.
Has the right.
I'm not sure that, that that's an appealable question. They could always file something with the Court of Common Pleas and ask for what's called a declaratory judgment.
Okay.
Which would basically be saying, hey, court, you declare whether they have jurisdiction.
Here's the problem, and I want you to declare this.
Yes. So they have a couple options as it stands now in the court system.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, Clerk of Council Catherine.
I have one more question for him. He answered, that was not question number one, the one on your board. My other question for you is, is the Community Development Block Grant is associated somehow with the Development Act of 1974, correct? So it has something to do with HUD involved with that? Because I'm looking at the contract. My question for that is, it looks like we're going to be getting some money, and I kept asking, what is the catch? And it looks in here that we will be totally at the mercy of Hamilton County programs. On the item one, it says by executing this agreement and participating in the Hamilton County program, the city understands that it may not apply for grants under small cities and states program, nor participate in home, in a home consortium. Then after that, it says, it's also understood between the parties that the county will have the authority and responsibility to make decisions concerning the contents of the plan. It says in here also that the act also places emphasis on urban areas in providing for the distribution of urban county formula funds. It says that the parties acknowledge that whatever the city election, the county will have the responsibility and authority for the overall implementation. It seems like we're giving away an awful lot. I knew there had something to do with the money, and I knew that they were not going to give us thousands of dollars for nothing.
Okay, but what have we given up since 1974? What have we given up since 1974, Dave?
The thing that I know of.
Would you like to?
So we've had, I mean, we've been doing this for 40 years. We signed it back in '75.
And if I could clarify, this is HUD money. This is federal money, goes to the state. The state sends it to, there's two options. Either if you're in an urban area, which we are, where the county distributes the money to the municipalities in the county. That's one way. The city program, because the city, Cincinnati is their own, they receive their money directly. They don't work through the county. But all the other suburbs receive theirs through the county. So the county is administering this program. And yes, our guidelines that we've drafted for the housing program, they go to the county for review and approval. When we have applicants, we, we review that information, but it goes down to them for the final review. The work gets done. People submit their receipts. We verify the work and send it to the county to pay it. So yes, the county is very much, and that is the way it has always been for that program. The money goes to the county. The county administers it and sends it out to the suburbs that participate.
And the county planning commission is also the ones that gave us the, the people that ruled our zoning code?
That's, they're not connected.
Entity, no, that's not the same office.
Now, I'm really still concerned. Like I said, we take the Queen's coin. At some point in time, they're going to ask for something. What I'm concerned is would be the public housing.
But why wasn't this brought up prior to our decision?
It was, and we had lengthy conversations about.
Yeah, we did.
We, we had conversations just like this back in 1974, and the council at the time in '74 agreed to do it. And then every three years, roughly, we have renewed the program. So we're in the program, no matter what we would do today or not. We're obligated for all the monies that we've gotten for the last 40 years. So, you know, there's.
The first time that I was.
You can't get out of it.
The first time that this came up, when I was, the first time I was on council that this came up, I asked very specifically, does this increase, decrease, or have no effect on the potential for us to have HUD housing in our community forced upon us? And the answer at that time was, it doesn't have any effect whatsoever.
Plus, wasn't there the green, was it Green Township?
It was Green Township. That, that was an active issue the last time we went through this, and they did not participate in the program, but they are very much having public housing. So it does not guarantee that you will or you won't. It's, you can get it either way.
Is that your opinion also?
Yes, yes. I mean, I remember when that came up last round, and we've addressed that question.
I would like to know, though, what you propose at this point.
No, I'm just hearing the questions because.
I know, but I'm trying to understand the purpose and what you're trying to propose.
I'm not proposing something different. I'm just questioning the fact that, call me a question mark for things, but I, I feel uncomfortable receiving money and not knowing what is going to be asked in return. I see, I was not part of the program that Mr. Moore was talking about and Mr. Driss is talking about, so I'm trying to understand.
But you were here when, when we talked about it before. I remember when.
In July.
Yeah.
And I, and I asked the same question, and at the time, I, I just, I still have questions about it.
Well, it's almost like anything, whether the state gives us money, the county gives us money, or the federal government gives us money. There are all contingencies in those grants that we get that we have to follow. So everything we get money for, we have to agree to certain things and pass an ordinance or a resolution accepting that. And so, you know, like I said, this has been a, a very good program for the Village of Green Hills, and.
And so far, no downside from what we can see.
No downside. So I'd have to go back and see how much money we've gotten, but I'm sure it's over more than a million, million plus, something. Because in those early years, we were getting almost $200,000 every three years, maybe a little more than that sometimes. And the community is benefited from it. So, okay. Moving on. Clerk of Council Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The October 2014 community calendar and ordinance numbers 2014-08 TNS and 10 LNR and resolution numbers 2014-29F, 30F, 31F, 32F, and 33, 33CD were posted as required. Additionally, cancellation of the Streets and Services Committee and Laws and Rules Committee meetings of September 29th, 2014, and cancellation of the Traffic and Safety Committee of October 28th were also posted as required. And notice of the public hearings regarding the Community Development Block Grant, public hearings on October 14th, 2014, and October 21st, 2014, were posted as required. And if there are no questions, that would conclude my report.
Mrs. Lam, I have a question. I just found out this afternoon that perhaps the agenda that I had sent for our Street and Services and the draft of the minutes that I had sent did not leave the mailbox, because the system has changed.
It came through.
It came through?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Chief of Police Neil Furtimer.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Late last month, a compliance monitor with the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services came here to Green Hills, and speaking of restrictions on grant money, came to audit to ensure that we had spent the grant money properly that we had received for our new video cameras, and due in large part to the prep work done by our finance director and the participation of our municipal manager during the audit. We had an absolutely clean audit with no findings. We do have the new video cameras that are placed in our cruisers as a result of the grant. That funded two of those cameras, and we cheerfully used money confiscated from drug dealers that we've accumulated in our Drug Law Enforcement Trust to fund the other two. So I'm pleased to report that our VHS tapes in our old cameras are now a thing of the past, and we're using up-to-date technology. One of the, the best items of note was that in this current month, one of, one of our own is the Officer of the Month in Hamilton County. That hasn't happened in a long time. And typically, we compete for that honor with municipalities like Cincinnati and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, who, I guess fortunate for us, see a lot more crime. But in this instance, the specific trigger for this nomination was Officer Eric TriCase's work in affecting the apprehension, the arrest, the conviction, and incarceration of an aggravated robbery suspect here in Green Hills this spring. And Eric did a textbook job in that particular case, and that's what triggered his nomination. But in addition, he also has served his country in the United States Marine Corps, and currently is a Marine Corps Reserve, and is also works for Chief Spade as a volunteer firefighter here in Green Hills. So I think he's a well-rounded award winner and very deserving of that award. We did hold our annual departmental meeting earlier this month, and we updated some critical policies and procedures. We had representative of our law directors firm, our municipal prosecutor was here to provide us with a legal update. We did provide, or take a group picture, which hidden talents in this room. Finance director was a photographer, and Mr. Halter was the photo editor. You'll see that contained within the report. So we were happy to have that done. During that meeting, we had a suggestion by one of our young officers, Officer Guilfoyle. And as a result, we signed up as a member of a, an enterprise called the Southwest Ohio Police Intel Group, and it's a network of investigators that share and exchange criminal intelligence information. And Sergeant Luke's will be coordinating that for us and receiving that information, passing it on to our officers. Later in the month, on October 16th, Lieutenant Ward and I attended the regional meeting for our software vendor for our departmental computer system. Lieutenant Ward is continuing to work on integrating our mayor's court data into that system to eliminate redundancies and down the road reduce some costs. As you witnessed firsthand, we sponsored a pumpkin coloring contest for students in kindergarten, grade one and grade two at our primary North Elementary School. We're very pleased to make those presentations tonight, and thanks, Mayor, for your help. During the month of September, we investigated one traffic accident, four crimes, 180 other incidents. We made 737 contacts with our citizens. 163 of those were dispatched as compared to 150 last year. 574 of those were self-initiated by our own officers. The department provided assistance to the public 82 times during the preceding month. We assisted other agencies 73 times, and we made 39 criminal arrests and 72 traffic arrests. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions to the chief? Hearing none. Fire Chief Anthony Spade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See, a few statistics for you. And in September, we had 69 runs. That takes us to 560 runs year-to-date, which compared to 507 at the same time last year is an increase of 53 or 10.5 percent. I want to welcome new probationary members, Jared Dornbusch and Joseph House. Unfortunately, we have three tenured members moving on, first being Harry Zareski, who's been with us five years. He's relocating to Louisiana with his wife, so we wish him all the best and thank you, thank him for his service. Captain Keith Essert, who's been with us 12 years, has also relocated to Florida, so we want to thank him for his service. And then, last but not least, Brian Wood, our captain, completed his 20 years of active duty this month and has chosen to take his life membership and retire. So he'll be recognized at our annual meeting this year, but I want to thank those gentlemen for their service and glad for them that they're moving on, but it's always bad for us when we lose good people. So best of luck to them. Hydrant maintenance is, we're finishing that up right now. Hopefully, we should be done here within the next week or two. Just ask residents to, as you're raking those leaves to the curb, as the municipal manager had indicated earlier, to not vary fire hydrants with the leaves. I say it because it happens. So please just take note of that. And then, of course, the hydrants will be ready for winter. Fire Prevention Week, I just want to recognize Lieutenant Chris Knight and our crews that went to Wentworth Primary North, the Green Hills Co-op, and the Learning Garden Academy. That was the first week of October every year, which is Fire Prevention Week. And as usual, our, our folks did a great job getting out to the schools and preaching the fire safety gospel. Reminder that this Friday night is Halloween. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a weekend night this year. Yee-haw.
I have to make that resolution, though.
Yeah, so.
You're kind of jumping the gun there, aren't you?
Pending approval of your resolution, councilman. We're going to be out handing out candy, but more importantly, us along with the police department, we have a huge presence on Halloween. We're out there to make sure that things are safe for, for the trick-or-treaters and the residents, and it's, it's always a great time. I would just ask everyone to, to be safe. Usually, the portable fire pits come out, which is great. Last year, we had to have a guy remove one. He was burning it in his garage.
Oh, gee.
Yeah.
Oh, my.
So anyway, be safe with those. Let's have a good time and be safe, but we'll see everybody on Friday night. This weekend is time to change your clocks, so we always remind everyone to change your smoke alarm battery as well. You gain an hour this weekend, so you have time to do it.
Nice.
I suspect most will just have an extra hour of sleep. But all kidding aside, we would, we would just ask everybody to please check your smoke alarm batteries. It's, it's real, real important. And finally, I just want to comment, you know, the fall is our busiest time of the year. We're going to be out there starting this week handing out our Turkey Raffle routes and asking the residents to support the fire department by buying a chance to win a turkey. That will culminate with the, the Turkey Raffle itself, which is on Saturday, November 22nd, at 6:00 p.m. Across the lot here at the Legion, as it always is. And I just remind everyone that those funds that we raise from the Turkey Raffle are a huge part of our operating existence in Green Hills, and we really appreciate everyone's support. So with that, unless there are any questions, that'll conclude my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Chief, I just want to go on record that the demonstration at Primary North was quite real. The siren went off seemingly right outside my house, which it did, and then pulled into the school. And so I come out of the house, and I see all the kids out in front of the school in the fire drill mode, and it's like, what is going on? So it was quite, quite a real demonstration. And I was real happy to see the guys just kind of wave as they went, and they kept on driving back to the station. So, good job.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, mayor's report. I have the mayor's court numbers for the month of October. The State of Ohio received $1,282.50. The Treasurer of Hamilton County received $43.50. Village of Green Hills received $5,571 for a grand total of $6,897. Also, later, when we have motions to be read, I'll have two motions for appointing Bud Walderman to the Planning Commission and Oscar Hoffman to the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's all I have. If anybody has a question.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that I handed out all the garden awards. They're trusted to me, so everybody was very, very happy to listen.
I did too.
Okay. You had the same. Everybody was smiling. I rang the doorbell, so it was really nice.
Nobody turned their dogs on me, and I held up that for sure. Nobody turned their dogs on me, and I held up that for sure. Okay, moving on. Community Development, Councilmember Halter?
Yes, seems like an echo, but I'll say it again because it's worth saying. Harvest Fest was just a great event. Thank you for all who attended. As Doug mentioned, it was a beautiful day. Thank you to all the vendors that participated, received quite a bit of favorable feedback. Also, all the Harvest Fest volunteers. I think it's kind of ironic that Doug Kohler gets up and thanks everybody because no one worked harder than Doug Kohler. No one invested more money than Doug Kohler. Now, you went to the wall for that event, and I know it was a little bit easier when Diana was in town, but thank you very much. Greatly appreciated, and just a well-done job, Doug. Thank you.
He's burning red.
I'd also like to thank Dan as well, Dan Dusa, Patricia Bender. I'm running a risk by naming names that I might miss somebody. It's not intentional. Chris Russo, Volunteer Committee, just did a great job. Those on the Rec Commission, Greg and Peggy Hermes, Maria, thank you for your help in collecting donations at the wagon, Glenn and Barb Dreese, Candice Shank, my neighbor, and Betsy, my wife, who left from work to come and serve as well. Also, Chief, thank you to the Police Department. Anne Ward did a great job, made some new discoveries that day that there was a two-day soccer match. I had made some calls concerning that, but didn't receive anything back, and low and behold, it was true. And I contacted the Police Department. All the officers were very responsive, tried to minimize the shutdown, and it was very prophetic of Anne to, early on, and I think you were part of this, to say, hey, let's route it that direction so fair get stays closed as short as possible. And I think they were held up maybe 10 minutes is all. And then, Alois Alzheimer Center, they actually put money towards some of the signage, and just a thrilling out, a number of people showed up. I think they had like 22 people running. He said last year, he was kind of embarrassed when they took a picture of the volunteers, that he thought that it maybe outnumbered the participants. That was not the case this year. Over 125 runners and walkers. And, you know, I think it's building momentum, and maybe I can follow in the footsteps, and we can follow in the footsteps of Jim Miller in creating an annual event that's just really fantastic. But thank you for Yvonne and your staff. Mike, I mean, I know there's more people involved, but as you mentioned, Springfield Township, them donating the flowers and actually even delivering them. I did have a couple people ask me for those. I didn't see them on Sunday when I told them to come back. I just hope that you have a very, very sturdy pole to take one of those flowers because it's not a light thing. And I think that concludes my report at this time.
Okay. Any questions?
I just want to concur with Mr. Halter. That whole process went beautifully with the weather over the last. So the next time, I think I may ask to help on the bowling part because I'm closer to the ground.
Be careful what you ask for, because pumpkin bowling is a lot harder than it looks. And when you spend most of the day upside down putting pins down, it's...
He did tell me he was getting dizzy.
Well, he told me.
But he had a failed stroke.
He told me also. That's what I was mentioning.
I wasn't getting dizzy. I was dizzy.
Well, thank you for your sacrifice. And I forgot to mention you.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Okay, moving on. Traffic and Safety, Councilmember Brokaw.
No report at this time. I canceled. I am not feeling 100%, but our next meeting will be on, I believe, November 25th at 5:30. If anyone has any concerns, just email me or Yvonne.
Okay. Finance and Audit, Councilmember Dreese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me give the end of the third quarter update on where we are financially. Income tax year-to-date is $796,000. I'm going to round these off to the nearest thousand, which is $40,000 ahead of last year. The General Fund year-to-date revenue is $1,459,000, which is $246,000 less than the prior year. And the biggest impact on that is $286,000 that did not show up from the inheritance tax now that it's sunset. So while this was no surprise to us and something that we worked hard in the planning side, it's not any fun when reality arrives. The real estate taxes are down about $15,000 at $362,000. The General Fund balance as of September, the end of September, was $1,56,000. So that's kind of a little bit of the financial highlights. Oh, I did want to note that through September, we have appropriated $2,153,000, and we've spent 80% of that at $1,723,000. Later on tonight, we have one, two, three, four, and possibly a fifth finance piece of legislation. One of them, we'll go through it in some detail. We have the supplemental appropriation in some of them, or to make some adjustments. Some of them are to catch up things, but we'll go through that in some detail. I think it's always good to remind council and citizens that, just like your household budget, we do have some unanticipated expenses and through the... And we budget some for capital expenditures, but these were things that we didn't budget that we spent money on this year. $20,000 for painting of the service garage, roughly $30,000 for a police cruiser, $4,000 for a pool pump, a boiler and a piece of residential property for $6,000, and some garage roofwork on another piece of residential property. And that totaled almost $69,000 of kind of unanticipated expenses, which is not totally unusual, but it's good to remind us that these things do come up, and we have to fund them as they do. Without trying to make a political statement about health care in America, I will let everyone know that our employee health care renewal has come back. They've worked very hard, but we're still going to see 11.6% increase. And this is painful for the village. It's painful for employees, but this is the reality that we live in today. At the proper time, I will have an ordinance amending our tax, income tax with regard to SERPs or SERPs, which are a retirement vehicle. Just clarifying that they aren't part of what people will be taxed that make those contributions. And it's just a clarifying thing. There were some, two different pieces of case law, and so we felt it was a good idea to be clear on that. We'll also have a resolution establishing a fund for Wenton Road. The Finance Committee is looking at the fee schedule for 2015, and council should be ready next meeting to receive that. Next meeting, we'll also hope to have an indication of where our property and casualty insurance renewal will be for 2015. We took a very painful increase last year, and we're hoping for something better. We're looking at the renewal of the contract for Swim Safe and also for the golf course. The pool did not have a very good year financially this year. Revenue was down, expenses were up. It's an important amenity for our community and looking at ways to try and increase the revenue. We don't think that there's a lot of opportunity for reduction of expenses, and we have the opportunity to lock in three years, so we're looking at that also at this time. We need to review the golf course contract, and we'll be doing that in the near future also. I believe that concludes my report. Any questions?
I had a couple of questions, Yvonne. On the $20,000 increase of the supplies and materials, I have to assume is the salt.
Can you hold your questions on the supplemental appropriation until we get to that and we address them at that time?
No problem.
Is that the only question? Or are all of them referred to that?
Yeah, all of them are referred to that.
Oh, I failed to mention, Matt is here this evening. He is our Finance Director, and I'm going to have him help me with the supplemental because he knows a little bit more of the detail on some of those things. But Matt, I just want to publicly acknowledge that I am glad you're here. You're doing a great job. I love your analytics. I love your dry sense of humor, and I appreciate what you're doing for the village, so... That concludes my report.
Okay, Recreation Cable TV, Councilmember Hermes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Rec Commission did have a meeting this past October. We're going to have some website updates happening. A few changes have been made, and we're going to be updating the website, so a little bit easier to work with. The walking paths have been designated, and markers are going to be made and designed by Jeff Halter. And then, hoping to have those...
Free is affordable, that's right.
I'd like to have everything placed in those designated areas, and we'll figure out the placement of where we're going to be putting things, be ready for spring for the walking, okay? Other things were discussed. I wasn't there at the time, but I'll bring up other things if, when appropriate, for the next meeting when we come to some kind of conclusion of some of the other items. Also, I do have a resolution coming up. It's designated date and time for a Halloween trick-or-treating. Yeah.
That's it. I have a question.
Oh, the mayor!
We have an opening on the cable TV board.
Yes.
And I didn't know if you'd planned...
Yeah, there's actually three applicants that we're looking at, and so I guess hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have something. I've been talking to Chip Burquist about it.
Okay.
He said if we can have something by the first of the year, it'd be great.
Okay. All right. Good enough. Any other questions? All right, moving on. Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, Laws and Rules, had a meeting on Monday, October 27th. The stated purpose of the meeting had to do with having a discussion concerning the vicious law ordinance and any possible changes to chapter, in particular, Chapter 505.2. A lot of it has to do centers around the most recent event in January, and our discussions really dealt with trying to come up with a proper recommendation to council on simplifying the penalty aspect of that, actually helping out our police officers, first responders in that particular instance, and being able to define, really, the complication in determining what is a dangerous dog and what is a vicious dog, and how do you address that situation with the owner of the particular animal. And we came up with some suggestions, and we'll be running those through Law Director and Chief Fertleman for their comments. We discussed some old business and new business that would be coming to our committee at some point will have to do with some possible garage doors, zoning code issues, junk collectors and junk truck restrictions, and an update on the employee manual. That was the balance of our meeting. Do have a couple reminders to be sure that when you renew your license plates, which I did this month, happy birthday to me, to remember to put in Green Hills, not Cincinnati, but Green Hills, so that we get that financial credit that comes back from the state. And also, the other reminder is to vote next Tuesday, November 4th. There is an important issue on the ballot that is the renewal of the Green Hills Streets and Road Levy. It is no new taxes, so please consider that strongly. That is the end of my report, sir.
Okay, any questions? Lee, a comment, you probably paid your portion of the village fee. We'd cover patching half a pothole, maybe.
Perhaps.
Okay, moving on.
Do I get to pick that pothole?
Service and Streets, Councilmember Walter.
Yeah, we did, we had a meeting the same day, October 27th, at 9:00. And one of the things that we discussed was their service truck, and at that point on Monday, we said, oh, we're going to try to make it all the way through spring, and we had this emergency, so it looks like it sooner rather than later. When will we have a final word on that for their service truck?
Again, we're waiting on the state bid to be re...whatever they do.
Re-bid.
You know, re-bid. I don't have a date on that, but I would imagine it would be before the end of the year.
All right. On 10/11, I mentioned that I attended that symposium between Hamilton County and Warren County having to do with the HB, House Bill 5, and there were some hot commentaries there. Some people were very distraught about it, and they're all concerned about their revenues and how it's going to be taken care of. They were very, very upset. They demanded of the representatives that we had there from the state and senators to actually, to voice their vote and how they voted on that when they went there. They were very perturbed there, so it seems like that's still up front on that. On 10/24, I joined Mr. Lee and Mr. Dreese and Mr. Mayor. We had the Homecoming Parade, and we had all kinds of candy flying around everywhere, so it was a sugar kind of thing. I, of course, attended the Laws and Rules meeting also on 10/27. And I would like to also make sure that, like what Mr. Lee said earlier, the license plate situation. I've been here for 21 years. Every time it said Green Hills, 45218. Last May, it did not. So make sure that when you're renewing that, you will say, make sure it says Green Hills, 45218. Like I said, it's just odd. I took it for granted, but Mr. Walter always reminded us of that, and I said, excuse me, that is not Green Hills zip code. And it was not even put there the word for Green Hills at all, but Cincinnati, and then they gave another zip code there. So that's a good reminder for that. And that concludes my report for Streets and Services, sir.
Questions?
I have one, and I'm not sure if it's for you or for the manager. Someone noticed and reported to me that there's no street sign at Jennings and Ingram. I didn't know if...
Mike's probably aware.
If we were aware of it. And I didn't think anything of it, and then when I passed it, I did not... And I didn't think anything of it, and then when I passed it, I did not see one, so.
Okay. Now, we did discuss the two properties in question, but they are working together with insurance company, and that being taken care of, we have been dealing with for the past four months or so, so that's being taken care of.
All right, moving on to new business. Mr. Dries, do you have an ordinance making supplemental appropriations? Number 2014-11-F.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance making supplemental appropriations. I'm moved to suspend the rule, reading the ordinance in its entirety and reading the ordinance two times on two separate occasions.
I second.
Been moved and seconded to suspend the reading, ordinance in its entirety, and suspending two readings.
Two readings on two separate occasions, that's correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of the ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Second.
Okay, questions on the?
Well, we got some, we're going to have some comments about this. If you want to come on up to the podium there, that would be helpful.
Can you state your name and your draft?
This is an appropriation to do, in essence, a couple of things, and I asked Matt to be here a part of this, partially because I think it's good for his development to come to see a council meeting, to let the public meeting, but also, I think it's good for him to help me, too, through a couple of the more intricate accounting things that are going on here. But essentially, we've had some expenses in the year that were over and above what we originally appropriated, so as those funds run low, we need to replenish that money. One example would be, we had instances where we had a rough winter, we had overtime for people that were doing the snow removal. We didn't appropriate additional money at that time, we just waited till the, you know, till this time, and we need some money so that we can pay those people the rest of the way through. So that's one example. We have a couple of funds that we need to authorize money into so that we can do the work that needs to be done in those funds. So Matt, what I'd ask you to do is maybe start in the general fund, and just talk about any changes that are, let's say, 2,500 or more. So, you know, the first one would be the opers for the part-time police.
Sure. For the first one, for the pension for the part-time police, back in August, there was a $20,000 supplemental done for the salaries, and this is just a corresponding adjustment to the pension for that account.
So this is just the benefits catching up to the salary piece?
Yes.
Great.
See, and the next line is the insurance for the police, and this is due to one employee was budgeted to waive coverage, but he took the coverage for the year, so that's the corresponding difference with that. Down for the salary for administration, the $5,000 is there. There was an employee who was paid from that account three separate times, that should have been paid from a different fund, so this is just trying to help play catch-up there. And it's the same for the X-line, the pension, that line as well.
Okay.
Then also, the insurance for administration, that one, there was a difference in the allocation method. I was using the actual bill to spread that out, but since we use a group rate for the insurance to allocate for everyone else, that's why that one's a little bit off. And the salary for lanes and buildings, the budget was prepared to have additional part-time employee, however, there was a full-time employee that was hired, I believe it was around June, and then another one that was hired in July to replace him. So that is the difference there, and the following line for the opers there, that is the same.
Corresponding, yeah.
Yes. All right, and the largest line we have in the general fund is the contracted services. This is where the service garage painting came from, that was unforeseen. This account has a lot of activity with the villages, mainly our miscellaneous account for items, and it was expended to in excess of 90%, so we're trying to get more money into it to give us a bit of a buffer towards the end of the year. The capital outlay for lanes and buildings, we're taking $40,000 from that line in order to offset all the additional appropriations that were put into the general fund. See, and the, for the wall director, that is going up $10,000. We recently saw an increase in expenses in that line, and we're just trying to, to pay the bills through the end of the year.
And that's probably being driven on the prosecutor's side, correct?
Yes, correct.
You want to leave now, Jeff?
And the transfers out line, there are no transfers at this time. That one is just to correct a previous mistake that we had transferred out $5,000 and $5,500 in excess of what we had appropriated, so this is just to.
To true that account up.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. And the street fund for the salaries line, that's the one, there was in excess of overtime use this past winter to what we had budgeted. It was about 31 hours over for the entire year, just used in the first quarter for our streets employee, and the opers is corresponding. The supplies and materials for the streets, that is mainly due to the salt, that'll be roughly $10,000. And also, the reason that line is low, we encumbered our local match for the winter, the winter base, too. Okay, the capital outlay line in spoils, this is not for an expense, this is just to help reallocate money. The defense of spoils field was paid completely out of the general fund, and there is enough of a fund balance in spoils to move that over completely, so it's going to break about $11,000 in the general fund if we can move that expense. On the second page, the professional expenses in the general obligation debt fund, that's just the high estimate for a potential debt refinance to refinance our 2005 series bonds.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that in my report, and I'm going to just hit it lightly now. We are looking at refinancing the 2005 series bonds, and it's, that's a little bit more complicated because it's actually for bonds, and we'll go to a more traditional loan mortgage type loan for that, and through the rest of the life of that, we'll save between roughly $5,000 and $8,000 every year. It varies because there's four bonds with different coupon rates and different.
Right, but over the life of the rest of the loan, it's about $7,500. It'll save a bunch.
Good.
We'll keep looking at it. The interest rates are just incredible if you can refi them, so that's what we're looking at.
It's moving from a variable 4% rate down to 2.8.
Cool.
All right, and in the non-voted debt fund, the self-asset charges, that's just to account for all of the expenses associated with selling of the properties. Then in the other capital projects funds, the surface water and the Winton Road, that's just to account for the grant monies that will be coming in and subsequently back out for those two projects. Any other questions?
Actually, if you could go back to the transfer out on the general fund, that seemed, I'm okay with mistakes because I make them, too, but could you put a little more around, description around that, $5,500?
Yeah, I believe the last time we made transfers, I just put enough into the funds to, so we weren't running a negative fund balance, had enough to last, and I failed to look at the total appropriation that we had for transfers out of the general fund. So this is just to compensate for that.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
When will be the next time that we will be able to make a lump payment for the non-voted debt?
What was it again?
Our current plan is to pay it for the schedule.
Okay, we are not trying to pay anything ahead?
No.
Well, the, for the non-voted debt, the principal payment starts to balloon mainly this year, 2015. It hits its apex in '16, and then it begins to decrease a little bit. So we're trying to keep a buffer in that fund so that we don't have to transfer money out of the general fund to cover those expenses.
It was spiking, I think, at 2016, right?
2016, yes. Yeah. The worst.
Yeah. We wouldn't want to pay ahead and get in trouble later because our funds aren't going up, they're going down. Sorry, Glenn jumped in.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call.
Thank you for your color, Matt.
It took me to sleep, but that's okay.
Ready? Roll call.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
The ordinance number 2014-11-F, making supplemental appropriations passes. Okay, the next one?
Ordinance 2014-12F, an ordinance amending Chapter 191 Income Tax of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinances, whereas the Village of Green Hills desires to add a definition of pension to Chapter 191 of the Village of Green Hills Codified Ordinances, and whereas the Regional Income Tax Agency is recommending this definition be added to the code, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, State of Ohio, Section 1, that Section 191.02 shall be amended to include the following definition: Pension. For purposes of this chapter, a pension is any amount paid to an employee or former employee that is reported to the recipient on an IRS Form 1099R or successor form. Pension does not include deferred compensation or amounts attributable to non-qualified deferred compensation plans reported as FICA Medicare wages on an IRS Form W2 Wage and Tax Statement or successor form. Section 2, this ordinance shall be enforced and take effect from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Is that a first reading?
Just doing a first reading.
Okay. First reading. Okay. All right. Another resolution, or we have a resolution number 2014-34-R.C. Mr. Hermes, this is your big one.
Oh, my God, I am so tired of resolutions. You guys are hitting me up with this all the time when I'm here. Resolution number 214-34-R.C., resolution designating the date and time for Halloween trick-or-treating. She's faith. Whereas many residents and friends of the Village of Green Hills will celebrate Halloween with trick and treating. Trick or treating? And whereas for the safety of all involved, the village wishes to designate the date and time for trick or treating. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Section 1, Halloween trick-or-treating will be celebrated in the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, on Friday, October 31st, 2014, between the hours of 6:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. Section 2, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage. I make the motion to pass this resolution, please.
Second. Been moved and seconded to pass a resolution designating time for Halloween, 2014-34-R.C. Any questions?
I hope not.
All right, call the rule.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Hey, we now have Halloween.
Yay!
Okay. Mr. Dries, another resolution, 2014-35-F.
This is a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into an agreement with Anthem for providing health insurance coverage for employees of the Village of Green Hills, whereas the Village of Green Hills provides health insurance benefits for eligible employees, and whereas the village has authorized Heran Associates to request and review proposals for health insurance coverage from various carriers and determine that the proposal submitted by Anthem is the best proposal for the village in terms of quality, service, and adaptability. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Anthem for the purpose of providing health insurance for eligible employees for a term commencing December 1st, 2014, until November 30th, 2015. Section 2, that the finance director is hereby authorized to pay Anthem monthly premiums totaling an annual amount of approximately $91,988, said amount fluctuating depending on the number of persons enrolled in the plan. Section 3, that this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon passage.
Second.
Is that it?
I only did the beginning.
Did you move to adopt?
Not yet.
I thought I heard a second.
I thought you did.
I moved to adopt this ordinance, or this resolution, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Okay, do you want to explain anything?
Yes, our healthcare costs are up 11.6%. 80% of that is paid by the village, and 20% is paid by the employee, so regrettably, everyone gets to share in the pain. What? Share in the pain. Well.
Go see a doctor.
Yeah, and we looked at several alternatives. We, I met with the finance director and the municipal manager twice, specifically on this. This is a big chunk of money, not only for us, but quite frankly, for our employees. So this is the best that's available for us right now, so.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2014-35-F. F, roll call.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2414-35-F passes, providing healthcare insurance. Another resolution.
Yes, sir. Resolution 2014-36-F, establishing the Winton Road Rehabilitation Phase 2 Fund, whereas the village has secured a grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission for improvements to be made to Winton Road, whereas the Ohio Public Works Commission requires that the village establish a capital projects fund for the purpose of tracking all accounting activity relating to the project, and whereas the account will, the fund will account for all revenue and expenditures associated with, on behalf of payments made by the Ohio Public Works Commission to contractors, the fund is also to account for all local matching obligations incurred by the village. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1, that Winton Road Rehabilitation Phase 2 Fund, Fund 4903, is hereby established in the village treasury. Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and hereafter the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2014-36-F. Do we have any comments or questions on it?
Yeah, just as required by the OPWC, we have to establish a fund, and this is just the, essentially, the checkbook where monies come in and checks get written for this project, and at the end of the project, we'll have a zero balance, and.
And we have to do this as soon as possible because we're getting money from the state, right?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Resolution 2014-36-F, establishing the Winton Road Rehabilitation Phase 2 Fund, passes. Can I make the motion, or does a council member need to make the motion to appoint someone to the Planning Commission and the zoning board of appeals?
Mayor can.
You, you would ask for a motion of council to confirm your appointment of Mr. Walterman?
Okay. Do I ask for a motion?
To confirm.
To confirm my appointment?
Yes, to concur in your appointment.
Concur my appointment of Mr. Walterman to the Planning Commission.
Oh, you're asking me?
Or anybody.
Yes, I concur.
We need a second, don't we?
Second.
We have a motion to appoint Mr. Walterman to the Planning Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no, no no's, no negatives, motion carries. I need a motion to appoint, or to concur with my appointment of Mr. Ocky Hoffman to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to appoint Mr. Ocky Hoffman to the Zoning Board of Appeals. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we have another motion for police car?
To allow me to proceed with?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to instruct the municipal manager to pursue the purchase of a police cruiser and send a letter of intent to the dealership of her desire to buy a cruiser.
Questions or not yet?
I will second.
No, go ahead.
So is this, I knew we were eventually going to a new cruiser. Is this, what's the situation? Is this an...
This would be the second one.
Okay, okay. I was concerned that maybe we were going to a used cruiser, and I thought, no, no, okay. Okay. I came here one afternoon, and the thing was steaming up all over the place. I mean, I understand that, and I knew it was kind of expected. It was just a matter of time. I just was hoping that we weren't purchasing an interim cruiser, okay. Interim.
Yes, we have an old car we could offer as a boat anchor. Okay. We have a motion on the floor for looking into a police cruiser, moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now, do we want to do calendar before we go into second?
Yeah, let's do calendar.
Okay. All right.
I hate doing this one. Quarterly taxes are due October 31st. If you have the distinct honor and privilege of paying quarterly income taxes to the Village of Green Hills, send your money to Rita by October 31st.
I pay.
Light up Green Hills is December 5th, so put it on your calendar. Election Day is next Tuesday. We have a road levy. There also is a school bond. Council has not taken a public position on this bond. Read the information for yourself and be an informed voter, is what I would advocate for.
Got November 19th at 7 o'clock will be the Recreation Commission meeting.
I think his trade and services will depend on the situation of the truck.
To be announced?
This callback? It will be announced if we need to meet for the situation of the truck. Is that correct?
Sure, and I can just let you know about the truck. I'm not sure we need, like, I'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you.
Laws and rules will need to be delayed and rescheduled from its November, scheduled November date due to the chair being...
Unavailable.
Elsewhere.
Chair being, what chair?
That chair.
Oh, your other chair.
I thought you meant like a real chair.
The Legion is having 11:11 ceremony on the Commons, November 11th, Armistice Day.
Oh, wow, okay.
And...
What time is that?
It's supposed to start at 11, so probably be there 15 minutes before, 10 minutes before.
So at 11:11 on 11 o'clock?
Right.
And they do start on time.
All right, I've got my time.
10:45, something like that. Okay, anything else? All right.
How about Turkey Fest? One of those again?
Saturday, November 22nd, 6:00 p.m.
I'll be there, chief.
I'll gladly sell you the ticket.
We get prelims.
I'll take a piss bowl.
We get prelims, don't we deliver?
We need a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session, discuss the sale and purchase of real estate, and to discuss compensation of a municipal employee.
Can I second it?
And that we'll be coming out of making a decision, right?
Yes, you will be.
Yeah, we will make, make, potentially, potentially.
Potentially may have a resolution?
Yes.
We've got that kind of potential.
So Jeff second, we got to say yea, yea, yea?
Right.
Call the roll.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Okay, into executive session.
Five-minute break.
Wait, wait, hold on.
These are the resolution, this is the resolution?
Yes.
And it is? Number 37CD.
37CD. How do I go about making that adjustment? Is I ready for you to just read the adjustment that we have at the bottom?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have Resolution number 2014-37CD.
You need a motion to add that to the agenda?
Oh, okay, okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add Resolution number 2014-37CD to the agenda.
Second.
Been approved and seconded to add Resolution 2014-37CD to the agenda. Don't need a roll call, right? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I have Resolution number 2014-37CD, authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for the sale and purchase of real estate located at 80 Drummond Street. Whereas the municipal manager has been presented with an offer to purchase property located at 80 Drummond Street, and whereas council for the Village of Green Hills desires to authorize said sale and purchase. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected there on two, concurring. Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into a contract for purchase and sale pursuant to the terms outlined below. Purchase price, $36,000. Earnest money, $500. Sold as contingent upon the closing of buyer's property on or before December 5, 2014. Property to stay on the market during that time period. Section 2, that the municipal manager is further authorized to execute any and all necessary documents to fulfill the sale of said property. Section 3, that the finance director is hereby directed to deposit sale proceeds into, if you could strike non-voted debt and put general fund capital account. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. I so move.
Second.
Okay, any questions in the resolution?
Yeah, just want to let you know, Glenn, Dries, in 1980, I bought seven, it was a three-bedroom bathroom, with a, with a one-car attached garage, and I bought it for $30,000. Yeah.
Do I need to...
Crazy!
Wait a second, you moved to adopt.
I moved to adopt and...
Second.
He seconded. No other questions? Okay, call the roll.
Brokaw?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 2014-37CD, authorizing municipal manager to enter into a contract for the sale and purchase of real estate located at 80 Drummond Street, passes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a motion confirming the sale of 5254 Flanders.
Flanders.
Flanders. To the agenda. Is that enough, or do you need more information?
Second.
That's, that's good.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to add a motion to, to change the agenda, to add a motion on 5254 Flanders. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I presume this is a resolution?
Just a motion, okay. I have motion confirming the sale of 5254 Flanders to Michael Greary, originally approved in April 2014, and after recent negotiations, is coming to fruition at the moment of, at the amount of $38,500 per unit, and authorizing the manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the sale. Are you adding something to it, or are you...
That's it.
Okay.
Have those funds been designated as to where they're...
They were in, in that original resolution, that one was 75 percent to non-voted debt, 25 percent to general fund.
Okay, great. The total amount, we're going to get to $76,000. 38, 38.
38, 5, 38, 5.
Okay, 77.
Yeah.
Because, are we in the question comment?
We need a second.
No, we can't second.
Somebody second it.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Because of sale of properties, we will significantly diminish the amount that we will have to transfer into non-voted debt next year, in my opinion. It may be a fairly low amount.
Correct, that's correct, sorry. Do another numbers in my mind, yes, sir.
Okay. Ready to vote? No more questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, we get a document, like in our mailbox? Or is this it?
Yeah, we can have that and type that up. Could you type our motion up separately so we have that?
This last motion.
Say bye-bye?
Okay. Are we ready to adjourn?
Please.
We're adjourned.
adjourned!